Okay, so it is 7:05 and I'm going to start the budget workshop for the board. Yeah, the from the Borton, from the Groton Board of Ed and it's February 2nd and um. Take it away, Ken.
All right, we are back to our pages. So let me put up on the screen. I can't find it.
Five sixty-four.
Yes. Five dash sixty-four, this is a function, it's actually a combination of functions, but they're all function fifteen, under fifteen hundred. This is activities for the secondary school. On this page on five sixty-four, we have, we have two employees, athletic director, split between school in the high school, three tenths and seven tenths, and an athletic trainer, split in the same percentage. And the changes is, is the addition of the athletic trainer, that should say to, to salaries that will be adjusted, and a corresponding reduction to other professional services for those athletic training services. If we go down to five dash six-five, for the expenses, we have the athletic director salary. You'll see under other one nineteen, the, that's for the athletic trainer, and that will say athletic trainer on our final version. Line one twenty-six is stipends for the coaches. As of this point, we actually don't have final stipend amounts in the last contract with the teachers, that was not finalized, that we finalized over the next coming months. So we put in a two percent placeholder on those stipends, as well as we added stipend for wrestling at the middle school. One twenty-seven is other, so non, non-sports stipends, using the same two percent increase placeholder there. Social Security and Medicare wages is a calculation based upon the salaries and wages. The remainder of these expenses, the athletic director did provide detail by sport or by function, non, non-payroll expenses, and this just rolls them all up into one. Instructional improvement services, that's for some PD for the athletic director. Other professional services, you'll notice it's zero, that's the reduction due to the fact that we have the athletic trainer in the salary section. Athletic.
Athletic trainer. Did we lose you?
Yeah, he froze.
Oh.
Athletic officials.
We're losing, you're going back and forth there, Ken.
Yeah. Hmm.
We hear you now.
Okay, you hear me now?
Yep.
Commercial time, can you hear me now? Sorry.
Where, where is the page? Is the page still there?
The page is here.
All right. Oh, I don't have it, but I will get it, I get it right here. Okay, and so athletic officials are reduction, a slight reduction of three hundred, there is an increase in other athletic services. These are services such as the, the timekeeping, maintenance of equipment. Under four, four, one rentals, there is a reduction of a thousand dollars, this is a swimming pool rental for the swim teams. Student accident insurance is the same year over year. There is a reduction to the travel for athletics, a reduction of about ninety-five hundred dollars. We attribute that to some, to swimming and I think it was cross-country. Mark, and let's see, going down, entry fees, a hundred dollar more. Computer software, that's the family ID, is that what that one is, Mark?
Yep, yep, correct.
Increase in that one, and then other dues, the CIAC dues. Overall, for this function, it's a three point two percent increase or an increase of thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. I wish I could.
So I want to recognize this.
Ken, um, could you do, go over three, three, two, that line item again, please, I, I didn't quite catch it.
Three, three, two?
Three, three, two, other professional services. It's got quite, I mean, we go from forty-two thousand, six hundred, down to zero, and I don't understand that.
That's where the athletic trainer, we used to use a third party.
So that's.
Get charged here, it's no longer a third party, so that's why you're seeing increase under salaries.
Thank you. We have our own and, and the person's able to do both middle school and the high school, where before it was just the high school.
So that's the trainer, and I have one more question, Mark, this is for you. Um, Mark, why do you, why are you anticipating a decrease in travel for athletics?
Well, it's a good question with, specifically with swimming. You know, with the, a lack of pools, I guess you'd say, in our area. Predominantly, most of the swim meets are being handled at UConn every point.
That's good.
That's a, that's a large piece of it right there. With cross-country, you know, they're sharing buses, you know, with girls and boys. You know, because of the sizes of teams are not huge, so we're able to, you know, fit fifty kids on a bus. So we can kind of reduce that as well. I think with some of the sub-varsity sports as well. You know, a lot of the local areas aren't offering as many sub-varsity programs. So, you know, the schedules may not be as full, we'll say, as, as maybe in the past, so there's that piece of it as well.
Thank you, Mark.
Can I ask who the athletic trainer is?
Sure, it's, her name is Bethany Grady. She, she was with us in the past with the third-party service that Ken was referring to.
Right.
And she ended up, she ended up stepping away, I guess, for what, a year or so, and then you know, I think the need for athletic trainers, and I've seen the need at other high schools, middle schools, the same, so a lot of schools actually are now following suit with what we've just done as well.
And, and how often is she at the middle school? I think we had a, a comment from, from a parent about how someone was injured in lacrosse and there was no one there. So how often are they, you know, does she share, it's only point three, I believe, at the middle school?
So she's been at every, every middle school activity, or I should say game that, that is that has happened since she's been hired on January first. So any, so she, you know, so for example, if if there's a, a middle school basketball game, we'll say at three thirty, she's there until probably about five, five-thirty, and then if there's a high school game followed, you know, we'll say five-thirty, she transitions over to the high school. So she, you know, I would say she's there at minimum, you know, two to three days a week, as well as, you know, handling a lot of the, the medical stuff that's going on with athletics, whether it's return to play protocols for middle school students, you know, dealing with injuries, talking with parents, sending emails, that stuff, she's it, it's, it's definitely a full load for her between high school and the middle school, for sure.
And COVID hasn't helped, because we've actually had return to play around that, too.
Actually, I said to Ken, sure, go ahead, sorry.
I just have one more quick question, where do they go now for physical therapy? Because our third party, you know, would, they would go right to where the physical therapist's office was. So now where do they go for physical therapy?
I think honestly, it depends on, you know, a lot of it depends on the insurance that the students have, where they're, where they're allowed to go and where they're not allowed to go. A lot of the times, it's comfort, where the parent feels comfortable, or maybe a past relationship that they've had with a previous physical therapy company, but she also has been seeing kids after school as well and and treating them, so she's been kind of doing some injury, injury return to play type of stuff as well, so she's kind of doing a wide variety of things.
That's great, thank you.
I would recognize Beverly and then Kat.
Thank you, Ken. What, what are the duties of the athletic director? Is that his full-time position, does he teach part, part of the day? Can you tell me more about his duties? Uh, duties?
Sure, you want, you want me to answer it?
Yes. You're the one who would know.
Well, I, I mean, honestly, I, being an athletic director, it's, you're wearing a wide variety of hats. You know, whether it's budget, officials, phone calls to parents, being at, you know, pretty much I'm at every single contest that we have. Actually, I could say I am at every single contest we have, whether it's at the middle school or the high school, dealing with officials, you know, parent concerns, ordering supplies, you know, scheduling, transportation.
Evaluating coaches, you're an administrator.
Yep, evaluating coach.
It's a big deal.
There's a, there's a, you know, dealing with fields, you know, observing that. What else? You know, working hand in hand with the nurses, working with the athletic trainer. It's, it's, it was a lot of stuff, I could probably, there's probably more than I'm not even thinking of, but yeah, that, that's probably the, off the top of my head, those are some of the things that I, I do.
Thank you.
Kat?
Um, do we have, this is a three-part question, I think, do we have ambulances available at every game?
It, it's not required, because we have the athletic trainer, the only sport that we, we definitely do is football. Varsity football is the only requirement, and technically, because we have an athletic trainer onsite, we, we don't necessarily need to have it, but we always have it just as a, a support.
And do we pay them by visit, or do we have a contract with them?
There's no charge, it, it's if, if there's a call, and they're usually the last one to be, you know, we'll say, for example, if there's three calls that go out at the time of a game, and they're the third call, they may have to leave, but they, they do return, so they're kind of on an on-call type basis. But again, because we have the athletic trainer there, we're covered from, from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dean? You're muted, you're muted.
Sorry about that. This may have been covered many, many, many meetings ago, where we're talking about an athletic director, but I'm thinking for the size of the pay especially, do we have a compendium, a description written of the athletic director's duties?
Yes, we have a job description.
Yeah, I mean, I can forgive Mark for not remembering everything off the top of his head, but we actually have it written.
Well, especially if you remember, it had been a teaching position slash administrator. Well, not even administrator, it was a teaching position. And there was some teaching responsibility, so when it became an administrative position, we definitely made some, some changes on the job description.
I thought as much, I just wanted to double check, thanks.
Yep.
Dean, I think that that happened as you were coming on to the board. And does that mean that you'd be playing a drum solo for us at the end of the meeting?
Oh goodness, not me, I have no rhythm.
Okay, all right, just want, just want to check. All right, any other questions for this page?
No, Ken, but just, I, that was a comment that I was going to make, that's why my hand went up, it's Liz. That there is a job description, and this was voted on by the, the past board, so this, this position. I just wanted to, just to state that there is a, a clear job description for this administrative position.
Absolutely, absolutely, we fought hard to get, and this was part of our way of making it a campus, right? Between middle school and, and high school, was to use Mark as one of the beginning links of that, and we're glad that you're here, Mark. Welcome back home.
Thanks, glad to be here.
So the other pages that, I should have gone through these as well before, just because these relate directly, on the back of the, of the this pink section, pages five dash one oh eight, five dash one oh nine, and five dash one ten, give like more, more detail, basically the same numbers, just in a, in a different format, I'll, I'll share it real quick. So this, this just breaks down the stipends by, by the different sports and/or student activity. And so that is the high school, this is the, so the total for the high school is seven seventy-two, three sixty-seven. The middle school is one ninety-six, five, five, nine, and that equals the nine sixty-eight, nine twenty-six, which is, was on the previous page that we looked at. This just gives a little more detail. And then page five dash one one zero just gives a, a view of what we actually did last year, and last year's, last year, this year's budget, and this, and FY twenty-three budget. So it's just a, more information, breaking down the same, 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 same amount, just different ways.
And the reason why we're not really having a conversation is, is that when we were negotiating the teacher's contract, the stipend piece, we agreed to meet with the negotiating, the union and the negotiating team at a separate time, and it hasn't occurred yet. And so what I, what I've heard you say is that you've put a placeholder for two percent, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I know Lori Lapine is working on, trying to get the, get some dates from the GEA. And I see that she said plan for March to negotiate the stipends.
So that means that that will be after we have signed our budget, or it has become our budget. But I'm going to recognize Rita and then Liz.
Ken, on page five dash one oh nine, under one five four nine, other expenses, fourth, athletic director and trainer. The, the salaries, well, first, there, there's a difference in the salaries, which I don't understand how it's broken out here.
So because we, we break it out, we're, we're assuming three tenths gets charged to the, to the middle school, and seven tenths gets charged to high school. So if you up on page five dash one oh eight, that is part of the athletic director and athletic trainer there.
Yeah, it just.
So in other words, what is the dollar amount for?
Dollar amount is different from this other page. So adding them both together, the middle school and the high school, it's a different dollar amount than, that is on page five dash six-five. Ooh. Oh, that's what I was curious about, I mean, I think different dollar amount.
Four, two, three, four, four, one, four, one. One for one, I get the same amount for the athletic director, one, four, one, one, four, six.
And the trainer?
The trainer, let's see. Forty-eight, nine, sixty. I, I get the same amount, if you add them together.
So you're adding them together, and that's included with their, whatever the increase was in the salaries?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Liz?
This is not to be answered tonight, it, I just wanted to ask that when we go into negotiations about these, this schedule, see, Kim, quit getting laughing at me. I I just don't understand why football, a football cap, coach earns so much more than, you know, than anybody for the budget, than a basketball or a baseball, and I, I just don't understand that. And I just, I would like, when you get negotiations or when we come to that point, I really would like an explanation of why the football coach, if that's just, or is that across a number of coaches? Is that sixty-one thousand dollars dealing with seven people? Is that how it's broken down?
Mark, can I be, Mark, can I be, see if I can be smart and understand this budget after so many years? My understanding is that that number doesn't, isn't just for one coach, it's for the multiple different team coaches, which is why football looks more expensive, because there's multiple different teams. And this is a chick that doesn't know a lot about football, because she's the swimming parent, so.
Yeah, well, this is a banned person, so, you know, you're talking about apples and oranges, babe, so. I, I apologize, I didn't, I didn't scan far enough over, but thank you very much for the clarification.
Liz, I think that's a great question, I think that that's a great.
We've all asked that question.
I know, Rita, I know.
Yeah.
Keep revisiting it, my brain doesn't engage some days.
No, 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 I mean, in years past, all of us.
Oh, I, I know. I wasn't taking it as a.
Is there any other questions for the athletics? Hearing none, Mark, you can be released, Mark, once again.
Hi, Mark.
It is so good to see you, and I am just, I am just really thrilled that you're, you are, you are back home.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Guys, have a good night.
Took the nasty plunge, knows the kids, knows the families, some of the situations we've dealt with, he's been right on top of it. So I do appreciate your communication and your hard work, Mark.
Thanks a lot, see you guys.
Bye-bye, Mark.
I also just wanted to say thank you to our colleagues from other town bodies that are here listening in to our budget workshop. I appreciate their willingness to kind of, kind of hang with us and hear our work. Once again, on Monday, I talked about, we were given a whole bunch of paperwork over the weekend, and that we were going to then parcel it out, so that we could kind of digest it. And so I'm going to pass that on, pass the next part of the conversation to Susan, where you can talk about sort of what does the, I think that that's what we're talking about, is the adjusted superintendent budget, right?
That's right.
Okay.
I'll ask Ken, can you share it on your screen for me?
Certainly.
So as we've gone through, and some things have come up, we've been able to go back and take a closer, harder look to try to make some adjustments on this budget. I'll have Ken start with where we, you know, kind of the preliminary initial, went right out of the gate. And then what were some of the things that we added, and then what are some other things that we've been able to really comb through, some of it with enrollment, and we will have a presentation on enrollment and talk to you a little bit about our plan for the future, which is very exciting. It's, so let me have Ken start us out.
Sure.
Ken, could you enlarge that a little bit, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
How's that?
Beautiful, thank you.
So we, we first talked about this, this budget pre, pre the holidays. And that's what that line number one represents, we talked about a number of seventy-nine million, seven forty-nine, four twenty-one. There were some adjustments that we made prior to completing the book that you all have in front of you. And it was these items here, lines three, four, and five. And so line seven, that, that's, that's what, that's what we, that Susan presented, and, and you have in the books in front of you. And I apologize, I have two line number nines, but we can get through it.
It doesn't change anything, though, with the numbers, the, the real numbers we need to look at.
So in, 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 in doing some work and looking at some of the coming, upcoming retirements, there has been some thoughts to not replace four of the, four of the FTEs, which would save three hundred and forty-eight thousand, seventeen dollars off of, off the budget. We did get an, an actual calculation of the severance number, and so that is actually an increase to the budget of forty-five thousand. We've got the report from the, from the town on the board's portion of the pension, and that is an increase as well to the budget of thirty thousand, eight ninety-four. And then in doing the recalculation of the health insurance, it actually reduced it slightly by, by ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. So, so we, we have a, a budget at, at that point of, of a two point six eight percent increase. And then we've, we've, there are some funds in the ARPAS, or I should say ARPAS, or not just ESAR, that we could offset some costs, we have general supplies, software, custodial supplies, and instructional equipment that could be.
And these are all within the framework of ARPAS and our plan. So we are able to offset some of the cost in the operating budget and put it on the ARPAS for next year.
And understand, this is a one-year, one-year deal, one year, we'd have to put this back onto the budget come twenty twenty-four. But if we applied that four hundred thousand dollar decrease, that would bring the budget down to a two point one six percent increase. And then lastly, we were informed by the town that our portion of the liability insurance is going to require us to pay an additional forty-four thousand, seven ninety-two. This is due to the new schools, and the new schools having a much higher value. It, the, this, the schools are now about sixty percent of the total value of all, of all the buildings in the district, and so due to that, we have to pick up a, a larger portion of the, of liability insurance.
We were actually given a bill for this year, which has already been budgeted for, so I guess we have to find the money for that, for this year. And then, you know, they gave us the heads-up last week that we had to, you know, add this in to this budget.
Yeah, for this year, we did, we had some budgeted, because we knew there would be some increase, but for the remaining increase, we are splitting that remaining increase with the town, they will pay a portion and we'll pay a portion. But after adding in the adjustment for the liability insurance, it actually comes to an increase of two point two two.
I see a hand up from Jay.
I got that, I got that.
Okay.
Great.
So I don't want to get ahead of the, the narrative, but the four FTEs that the decision has been made not to replace, is, is that due to enrollment? And, and where are those FTEs?
So three are at the high school, and one is elementary. And, you know, we really feel the efficiencies in the, in the size of our new buildings is part of the reason why we're able to do that. And it may change, you know, the next year, we can't always be certain, but for this year, we feel pretty certain that we can do this. And I, I have talked to both Principal Kelleher and Principal Bass about some of these efficiencies, and, and they're really doing a, a good job planning and scheduling for next year, looking at classes that weren't fully enrolled and not offering them, looking at classes that really are sought after, and making sure that we get plenty of kids in there, and really taking a close look at those high-level AP, you know, the honors and the IB, International Baccalaureate, and the careers pathways to encourage more kids, there's part, a career counselor that's helping us with this, a whole team effort to really tap kids on the shoulder and give them support, as Bev Washington would say, you know, and really enhance and diversify those classes. So they'll be coming to you to present more about that in the, you know, in the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Rita?
I had a couple of questions. Is one of the FTEs the Latin teacher?
It's not the Latin teacher, she'll be teaching a section of Latin and, or a couple of sections of Latin, and she'll be doing social studies as well.
We're still going to have Latin.
Certified.
You're right, we'll still have Latin in our high school.
For the kids who've been in, taking Latin, yes.
But what about someone who wants to take Latin?
Those classes are so underserved, Rita, that it doesn't make sense. They're not, kids are not signing up for Latin.
Well, again, just like you have to do with the AP and the IB to sell it, sometimes you need to sell the Latin. Because I, as much as I really feel the. Um, because I, as much as I really feel the um, the American Sign Language is extremely important, it isn't, doesn't have the rigor that, you know, Latin or French or Spanish has. You know, in terms of really understanding another language from another country and understanding the verbs and so forth and so on. So I, I would not sell Latin short. I think it's extremely important and it's, it's um, people, we actually, at one time, people from Ledger would come over to Fitch and take a Latin class. And students from Fitch would go to Ledger to take German because um German was offered at Ledger High School and it wasn't at, at our high school. So there are benefits and maybe it's a way of selling it to other districts. But um when I, when I look at this, um I, I, I wanna know when we're turning over the schools to the town. When is that going to happen? The, the schools that we're heating, providing electricity for that we don't have students in.
Was that on the agenda?
No.
I do think I sent out the form though with the, the turn, the dates and times. I think I sent that in board notes. I've sent you so much, I can't remember.
I think sometimes board notes is nice, but sometimes it's nice to also get the, like a separate notice about it, you know, or get it by email and say, this is what's going on. When sometimes it's all in the board notes, you miss it. But um, because obviously we're paying for those schools. And you said some things are going to be split with the town. What are those things? Are those some of the buildings that we still are paying for the electricity and the heat?
Sam is on here. Do you, Kim, do you want Sam to speak to that question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so um, we have not uh completed uh removing everything out of those buildings yet. Uh, and we would uh need to continue to at least keep them. Well, Mary Morrison will, will keep uh, uh up to date because we're actually going to have uh a program in there. Uh, but the Claude Chester and the SB Butler School, I'm hoping to uh of course, this uh little snow squall that we had the other day has kind of put us behind the eight ball. But I'm hoping to get us uh out of those two buildings by the fifteenth of the month. So that's what we're working toward. We have a few more things to get out of the buildings, to remove from the buildings, and then we'll be ready to turn them over to the town.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Will we have to continue to pay for the heat in those, Sam, when we turn them over?
No, once, once we turn them over to the town, uh, they'll take over the heat and electricity. And we will just continue at uh Mary Morrison because robotics uh will be there.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I was thinking, that maybe we would reduce some of our electricity and our oil costs if we.
Good thinking.
Well, it, that, we, it may be reduced, but we have to also understand that our new buildings actually use a lot more electricity than the older buildings did.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, there's a lot more uh equipment, uh providing more fresh air, et cetera, that are running. Uh, and, and of course, air conditioning, all those things um run more e- efficiently, but run more often than uh the older buildings did, so.
So that's, that's really why we need solar panels.
That's an item we're working on too.
Yes.
So I'm gonna recognize Liz and then Dean.
All right. I just wanted to respond very quickly. The curriculum committee has just looked over the American Sign Language, New and Improved Curricula. It is a very rigorous curricula and it is based on with, uh, it's in the same rigor as Latin, as Spanish, as in any of the others. So I, you know, I understand where you're coming from in terms of numbers. But I also think, I, I just want you to be aware that there is a new curriculum that has, that will be presented to you. But um, the curriculum committee has reviewed it and it is a rigorous curriculum.
Thank you.
Dean?
Two things. One, one has to do with Latin. My, my daughter happens to be taking Latin, so I'm kind of glad she's grandfathered in. She had switched out from French. She's looking to fulfill her language requirements. She has, for the last couple of years, thought about going to medical school. She's not thinking about anything else. She decided that some exposure to Latin would help her with the terminology. Schools don't offer Greek anymore. They haven't for a hundred years. But I'm gonna have to handle that end of it, I suppose. So that's why she thinks Latin would be a better choice for her than French. Um, and would still fulfill the language requirement. Do we have an idea of why kids take Latin?
So Dean, Dean, that's a great question, but I'm not quite sure if it's budget related.
Right, no, I, I understand, but on the Latin, on the Latin, since we're cutting things and rearranging deck chairs here. Uh, it's a question to be answered in the future. Why do kids take something like Latin that frankly has been dying along with other languages for many, many years? Uh, it was a small class when I took it, uh, when I, when I was taking other languages in high school. So my broader uh question is this. It was mentioned that some of these things, we can kind of take off the budget and kind of reduce from the three percent to a two point two-two. But, you know, we're gonna have to watch out for next year. I, I've mentioned this before. As a general matter, I do not like taking things off the budget this year uh as a way of making the increase look more attractive only to have to pay for it next year. I'd rather split the difference. Uh, I mean, this is just a general principle, split the difference. Because if we're gonna have to catch up next year, it's gonna be uglier. But that's presuming that next year, we're gonna see an increase like this. And we wish we hadn't thrown this on the next year. Do we have an idea of what next year's might look like? I don't, I'm not asking for firm numbers, but is next year also going to be a two to three percent increase? Worse, less?
Say that historically, these budgets have been coming in based on contract. And now with the um minimum wage, they've all been coming in at like three point O to get us started.
Right.
You know, that's just been the trend. It's, you know, when Mike was here, that's what we, you know, I said, oh, let's guess, it's three point O or three point O four or something, three point four. So I think that those salary and benefits are what drive there. They tell the story. They drive our budget.
So next year won't look pretty either. Um, yeah, just, again, I just rather just swallow it now than, than have to deal with it next year. But anyway, thanks.
Dean, I think that that's um, I'm hoping that you can keep that thought process as when we go to set what we think is gonna be our final number to keep that in perspective. Um, so please keep that thought process, because I'm not going to. Any other questions about this sheet? Once again, this is just for us to talk about it. I think people found it very helpful through the years to understand what it would look like if we were to move it to a lower number. Um, so that it's just a more concrete way um of kind of taking a look at uh, uh, the budget. So um Susan just wanted to, to get it to you sooner than later. Um, but we're also gonna be looking at it later.
And just as a reminder, that the way we've reduced it down to zeros in the past has been taken from the health savings account. And that's just not, we're not able to do that responsibly this year. It would be cutting into that yield sign and the, and the red zone. And I just talk about being on a cliff. I just would not want to have to go back to the town like Mike had to do in the very beginning when he got here to say, oh, well, you know, our health, health savings account or our health account needs, you know, some support. So I'm just trying to be very cautious about not doing that again.
If there's no other comments about that, let's move on to um our next agenda item, which is the review of the ESER. Once again, just for the board to understand, for everyone to understand, but for us to understand how um the um Susan and her staff are thinking about using the ESER.
This one, we call the story of the three ESERS.
That's right. That's, that's the three ESERS. Um, and so ESER one at this point um has, has been um uh completely used. It, it, it was, it was the very start of uh, of the, we're towards the start of the pandemic. And so, well, most of these um, these costs were, were addressing those needs. Uh, so at this point, we, we have spent the six eighty-six, eight eighty-two for the uh, for the first ESER. Uh, ESER two uh was three million forty-five thousand. Uh, we, and this was uh, the, the way we planned it out is we planned to utilize this uh for FY twenty-two and twenty-three.
Ken, can you make this a little bigger? I just see in the chat, people are saying, could we make it a little larger for them to see?
How's that?
That, I can read it.
Yeah.
How's everybody else?
Yeah.
So ESER two, uh, we, it was, it was meant for FY twenty-two and twenty-three. So we are, we are utilizing it. We're utilizing it in, in the way that we laid out here. Uh, you know, quite a bit in salaries uh for teachers and tutors. Um, and um, let's see.
Substitute teachers.
Yep, and social workers. Um, and, and for the software, we are, we are supplementing the software as we had laid out here. So uh ESER two is going along uh per, per uh, per planned, as planned, sorry. And so that one, it goes through um nine thirty, twenty twenty-three. So we have it for all of this year, all of next year. And, and if there was any leftover, we actually can spend it into uh, into the following year uh up till September. Uh, the, the final ESER or most recent ESER, ARPESR. Um, that one, we kind of planned it uh to be utilized in FY twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, kind of overlays uh ESER two. And so um here's uh so, some additional teachers and tutors, uh substitutes.
These are all total amounts from that grant and they're not laid out over the years. We actually have it laid out for us to examine over the years, so we're careful about um ensuring how they're covered. But these are total amounts for ESER one, ESER two, and then ESER, ARPESR three. And, but they do go over several years.
Yeah. And we've utilized some of the ARPESR at this point, but not, not a lot. But uh, we will, I know, uh, the, the total amount that we got for the ARPESR was uh six million five seventy-two. So, you know, it, it's, it's a fair amount of money and um uh three years sounds like a long time. But uh, uh, you know, we, we, we have to uh, uh, make sure we stick to the plan and continue to uh utilize these funds as we've laid out here.
However, because we've made these plans and they take a few years to graduate, we can go back and reexamine the plan and tweak some things if we want, you know, so that um, we, we kind of in a sense did that to make sure that we could take that four hundred thousand and, you know, have it in ARPESR. So we ensured that that was very doable. So um, before we laid it out for the board to look at. And there are a couple of years, so when um Dean was saying, you know, be careful that we're not on this cliff, that's something that we can look at again next year to make sure that we're not just adding on that four hundred thousand to a budget.
Yeah, one of the uh
Gradual.
For ARPESR was um, you know, you get a layout of budget, of course. Uh, but if, if things change, um, we have the opportunity to, to reexamine and reapply uh uh going forward. So uh Susan's exactly right that, that, that we can and should uh reexamine how, how these funds are, are getting spent. I'll take it down. See.
Matthew? You are needed to be unmuted.
Thank you. This may not be the time to talk in detail, but I would like to raise something that I think needs to be considered. When I read the intent of the ARPESR in the handout you gave from the Department of Education, it was pretty explicit that the intent of Congress was to meet a national emergency for the impact of COVID on our kids. And we have generally done this splendid job on this. But when I see offloading of operating expenses to ARPESR funds, when I see certain capital expenses, if a capital expense is for air handling or for safety, I see that immediately relating to this cohort of students. But operating expenses, I, I'm really troubled by that, particularly when I know that a couple of my colleagues on this board have made some beautiful suggestions. They're not mine. I wish I could take credit for them. Uh, bringing some direct services to the kids, low-income minorities, high-concentration neighborhoods and bringing services directly to them. So I would say to my colleagues, if we can truly say that we have met all of the needs of these kids, this cohort, this group now, not something that's gonna benefit over many, many years. If we've truly met all of those things, then I'm all for the offloading. But if we have opportunities to meet those most at risk that we've not exploited, I'd like this discussion to happen before this budget is solidified and voted on. Thank you for permitting that.
So when we prepared the ARPESR as a committee, we actually had um an ARPESR facilitator through Connecticut Association of School Superintendents. So everything that was put in there um was part of what the, was authorized. So when you say um things like HVAC systems, those were absolutely part of what was to be determined. And even the, the costs that we have in there that um offset the operations, those are all things that go directly to our students that really support during COVID times, whether it's softwares and computers. And, you know, we're still in this world where we're kind of balancing technology with, you know, with in-person learning. So all of those things are really legitimate and according to the ARPESR document.
I, I concur with you that there is nothing at all either wrong about what we're like to spend it on or what's in the budget. There's nothing wrong or have any problem with. Nor does it violate any statute. But I think the prime directive from me, and I acknowledge that I wasn't here all along and that there may well have been discussions that I wasn't a party to. But all I'm asking is to reflect upon direct, when I was going door-to-door during the campaign and I'd see, go to a door and there was a bike on the ground and I'd say to the guy, the person who answered, how's it going for the kids? And the guy tells me that he, he had to work two jobs. He hired somebody to take care of his kids and they lost a, a full year because the, the nanny or whatever the person was called. There's a lot of suffering going on. And if we're meeting all of that.
We understand that.
If we're meeting all of that, God bless us. But if there are opportunities, I'd at least like to discuss it. And if I'm voted down, that's fine. I can live with that. I'll support whatever the board does. But I would like to have this discussion and I'll say nothing more for now.
A great chunk of the ARPESR is in salaries and in substitutes and in tutors. So there is a big push for those um extra services for all of our kids. And for the kids who need them the most, they're getting the most.
Dean?
What it's worth, I had pointed out some of the very same thing earlier, which is how does money that's supposed to aid for problems with COVID, how does it get offloaded into other problems? And there's always a rationale, but let's be honest. Notwithstanding the prime directive that Matt pointed out, I think we all know what the big package was about. Some of it was for relief. The rest of it was what Congress normally does. It just put a label on it. So it, there's a spirit and there's another spirit behind this. But I, I still have the same problem. Wow.
Beverly? And Liz?
Thank you, Kim. Um, I agree with Matthew. I like to see the money spent where it's gonna really affect the kids and help the kids. And if, and if you could show me the data, how spending this money is gonna help the kids? And if you already spent the money in the past and that they, we see a lot of improvement or just a little improvement, then I'm all for spending it elsewhere. But I'm, I'm really wanna see the monies directly affect those kids and especially the kids that are struggling. And because you know, Susan, I wanna see that achievement gap closed. So.
I know, and I tell you, keep asking that question. You're right.
Liz?
Yes, Susan, I, I, I just wanted a little bit of clarification. You said that these, these funds, and if I, because being on the facilities and finance committee for two years, these funds are earmarked for certain things. Um, correct? Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay, and is, are some of those funds earmarked for infrastructure?
For um.
Like the HVACs.
Systems, yes, they are.
Okay, so that stuff that we can't really adjust?
We, we could if we, if we needed to, if something else came up. But those are the things that we set out to do in this grant. You know, there was a huge application process, it went through the state, it went through several renditions and um, in working with the state and, and got approved the way it was. So the, the things that we're saying that we would like to charge off to the grant were things that we were intending to. Yeah, like software and computers and, you know, the supplies.
All right, I, I'm just gonna, um, I'm gonna gather my thoughts a little bit farther, but I just think this is an area that we still need to have more conversation. Thank you.
Would it be helpful if um, we, if those, I, I know once bef- wow, let me try this sentence one more time. You had sent out that information about what the committee and what the state approved in terms of the ESSER grants, is that correct? I sort of remember that. How about if that gets resent so that um, for those of you who are new or for those who are like me, who don't retain information? We can have that and that allows us to have a better conversation and a more intelligent conversation. And that ma- maybe Matthew, um, some of your, some of your cons- your concern to be belied because it's matching or how it matches what needs to happen. And it shows a direct result back to um, how it's impacting, posit- hopefully positively impacting um, our students who have not, who have had a hard time in the past couple of years.
And to answer Beverly's question, we do create SMART goals that we really are looking throughout the year to see that kids are growing because of the plan. So we do that with the Alliance Grant, we did that with the first ESSER, the second ESSER, the third ESSER. Um, also, you know, being an Alliance District and we actually have, um, you know, administrators at the state level that meet with us periodically to review all the data. And then we tend, we'll bring the data to the board as well.
All right, so we'll, so state
The question about the ESSER, could we just have the dates of these, the ESSER one, ESSER two, ESSER three? I mean, what was it, ESSER one has already passed, correct?
Right, it was all the way through twenty-two, I believe. Then the next one was through twenty-three and then the last one was through twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so when I look at the ESSER three, the ARP ESSER three. The HVAC is pushed off to twenty twenty-four, then nine hundred and
Now, that grant started in, in twenty twenty-two. We just got that grant to begin in twenty twenty-one, actually, and it goes all the way out. So we're actually, um, we're, we're actually taking care of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars worth of HVAC this year. But it's not, all those improvements won't be made in one year, they're over a three-year span.
But I thought we did a lot of that last year or in, actually in March of twenty twenty, when, when, you know, when COVID started.
But that wasn't through the ARP ESSER funds.
It wasn't through the ESSER fund, but we did do a lot of HVAC.
Dan's group has been working really hard on, I know you knew NEA and CK and some of the issues we were having. And they, you know, they've had Mystic Air come in, but that's through CIPs and operation funds that that was happening.
And so we need more.
Still. Well, yeah, Fitch and, and Charles Barnham are the two older schools now, you know, older wings that um, require.
Which Sam talked to about that at um, the earlier meeting. Beverly.
Susan, where are we ranked as an Alliance District? In the Alliance District hierarchy, where are we ranked? Do we move up any since we
We've always been at the top of, of alliances, Beverly, we're the top. We're, we're the last ones in, that's why we probably get the least amount of funding. But um, we, when we compare ourselves to our DURG and to the other Alliance Districts. We, you know, whether it's through the S-BACS in three through eight, the NGSS or the SAT, we really outrank the others.
So, so Beverly, that's an interesting segue because our last conversation is on agenda is gonna be on the Alliance. But I wanna make sure, are, are people done with asking questions about the ESSER? Jay.
I see Jay.
Yeah, I, I think we can all agree that, that we all wanna make sure that, that this money is spent responsibly and will actually support the, the students. I think it's a, it's a matter that, you know, we need to analyze it a little more closely. I know there were parents that were very concerned that, that uh, the spread of COVID and other viruses was directly related to um, air circulation and filtering. Uh, and I know that we did upgrades uh, to get the existing systems up to the highest filtering standard that was available for them. Um, so maybe we could have a, a COW where we go over all this again. Um, and as Susan mentioned, thi- this can be tweaked over the next few years. Um, but you know, I, I, I would uh, welcome, you know, looking at this, you know, line by line again and understanding how it supports uh, the students directly and, and making whatever tweaks we think, you know, are necessary.
Well, just like as um, an administrative team, we go through this periodically, like almost once a month. It just keeps us refreshed, you know, it could be the kind of thing that I do with the board so that you're refreshed too. And understanding what's happening, what do we still need to do, what additional things might we do if we offset it with something else? It's still gonna be X amount of dollars, but I think the total can is like six million dollars. I don't have the exact number in front of me for ARP ESSER.
Yes, I believe it was, or it is, six million five seventy-two.
So it sounds to me like this will be a nice agenda topic for us once the budget is to, um, is kind of, um, with the, with the supporting documents that you're gonna give it, give to us before we vote on the budget, um, to kind of, kind of talk a wow, kind of take a look at how it impacts, um, um, what we do as a district. Rita, do you have other questions about the um, ESSER? Okay. All right, so let's move on to the Alliance.
Put up the um, what we said, oh, let's see. I can't, oh, here it is. All right, so this, oh, you wanna, you wanna go ahead?
I just wanted to say the Alliance Districts, our priorities are similar. We, we use the acronym TACO for talent, academics, culture, climate of our buildings and operations. So those are the four categories that your Alliance dollars are spent. And I have SMART goals for each one of those. And with a SMART goal, we're looking for growth. So the Alliance Districts has us looking over years to make growth. And fortunately, our state, when they do assessments for S-BAC, NGSS, you can't compare cuz they're every three years and SAT is a one-shot deal. But we do look at PSAT and relate it to SAT. But I would say that um, the, the good news about the state is that every single student who's taken the test before in our state, whether they move from, you know, town to town or school to school, we can keep track of their growth. And one of the reasons we've been acknowledged as having two blue ribbons in five years is because of closing the achievement gap in those schools. So, and I know Claude Chester got really close last year, that she was a school of distinction at Claude. Um, you know, before COVID hit. And so um, just to know that those are the parameters, those are the kind of goals we're looking at. And it's in those four areas. So looking for, you know, the diverse talent pool of teachers and administrators, the academic progress, the climate and culture, the SCL, and then also operations. So um, this year, um, one year we didn't get anything, one year we got six hundred thousand, another year we got three hundred thousand. We never know what we're gonna get, but because we were the last one in, um, we, they gave us something. So that was two hundred thousand, so I'll let Ken speak to some of these priorities.
Yeah, so we laid out uh, the, the two years FY this year and next year, uh, how, how we anticipate utilizing these, this two hundred thousand uh, funds. You see at the top, there are, uh, there is a teacher uh, in, um, and a tutor uh, that we anticipate uh, uh, using these funds to uh, pay for uh, as well as some curriculum writing, um, uh, which will happen uh, uh, at the end of the school year. Um, there's those costs for talent recruitment, the mentor, uh, minority recruitment, uh, PD and scholarship. Uh, and then as well, there's some software, actually not this year, uh, because we've got that covered through um, through other means. Uh, but then next year, uh, covering the investigations in the CMP three.
Those are both math.
Right. Uh, and supplies and, and classroom libraries uh, for this year. Uh, and then um, uh, offsetting some of uh, the uh, costs to, to manage uh, the, the grant and all grants, really.
And this grant is a little different than those ESSERS. The ESSERS are like over a period of two to three years. This grant, you have to spend all the money by the end of June. Um, and we don't like to give anything back, so we do, we spend it all. And if though, if this needs to be adjusted in some way, let's say we don't get all the curriculum things done, maybe I buy more books. We're looking to diversify our classroom libraries, so we have um, ample books that mirror our community. And um, they're either mirrors or windows um, to understanding each other. And so we might buy more books or something that you could purchase at the end of the year.
Questions about the Alliance Grant? Beverly.
So Susan, um, by spending our, our money in these areas, that's gonna help us to, um, yeah, okay, the Alliance District. They must have identified areas that we needed to work on. So would this money help us to work on those areas that were identified, that we were weakened?
Yes, and we actually do a lot of self reflecting too, Bev, and then we talk to some of the state um, administrators and um, we get some professional learning around it. We get some, you know, counseling ourselves around these different areas. So it's been very supportive for us, but we, we make those goals, we earmark those goals based on how our kids are doing and what progress we want to see happen. And they really, they evaluate that, they evaluate if we're making progress. So um, we're held accountable. Um, they're giving us money, but we're held accountable in all of these things. As we are even with DODIA grants, you know, those competitive grants. So um, and the MSAP grant, that was a federal grant. So they are monitoring always our kids' progress. Um, and not only by numbers, but also, you know, we used to have that yardstick. So they look at also very progressive ways to monitor who's involved, how much tutoring, who, you know, what were the teachers saying about the professional development, what was the survey showing from the community? So we look at the numbers, but we also look at um, the responses that we're getting from teachers and students and families.
And do you share those numbers, that information with the board?
Yes, when that comes available, that's, um, we actually have a chart that identifies different times of years. And when we tend to get the data back, so it gets shared with you, um, you know, once we've had time to analyze it.
So you still use that button, yardstick?
No.
Well, we don't, but the state has moved to include some things like graduation rates, all those things that you all put in there. The state has really had a pretty open mind about looking beyond just the numbers.
All right, thank you, Susan.
Any other questions about the Alliance? All right, thank you guys for spending another evening together this week. I would entertain a motion to adjournment. Andrea, I can't hear.
I know, I know, I'm, I'm muted. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Right. Bye, good night.
Good night.